Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the combined open meeting into session. And so I start with the calling the regional committee into session at 5:34.
I will call Northborough at 5:34, with the exception of Bryce is not present.
We have two members not present, Matthew and Kathy. And Kathy and Flashville.
That's got you.
Yeah. Perfect, so the... So the first item on our agenda is public comment. The time for anyone in the public to make a comment to the committees. Is that anyone in the public? Seeing none at this time, we move to our first presentation of the evening, the NSPAC annual presentation. Thank you.
So while you were getting set up, I just... I think you are good. So we have an outstanding partnership with our Northborough-Southborough Special Education Parent Advisory. And Alyssa DeGon, who is the president of NSPAC, is going to share a retrospective of some of the events such a place last year. And also provide an overview of what to look for as we move through the school year. Also in the audience is Johanna Shaner. And Johanna is the vice president and technology officer. And I believe, I'm not sure if Nicole Mayer is here.
She's not here.
But Nicole is the recording secretary, but she's not present. So I just want to thank NSPAC for all its work and welcome you to the meeting.
Okay, we are moving out.
Thanks for the question. Remember the next season?
Right?
It's taken too long.
Too long, way too long. Okay, we're back. Thank you, everyone, for having me. This year, last year, everyone comfortable, everyone. So, thank you. We really, NSPAC really appreciates your taking the time to hear from us every year. We love to share what we're doing. We're really busy, as you all are. So, here's a slide that you've all seen before. This is just a quick overview of what NSPAC does. I know many of you are very familiar with what we do. We're currently supporting 760 students on IEPs and 280 students on 504 plans. We network, we provide educational programs, we work with the district. I'm going to go into this more in the upcoming slides. But one of the main distinctions of our group is that we support all the schools. As opposed to some of the more individual... Here's my next slide. So NSPAC is different than NSPAC and PTO. And I've outlined a couple of the ways we are different, just so everyone is clear. We're a state mandated public party to serve as an advisor to the view. And the district matters pertaining to education and safety of students with disabilities. We have a duty to meet regularly with school officials to participate in planning, development, and evaluation of the district's special education programs. And as I mentioned, we do not represent families from one school, but we serve all families of children specially used from across the entire district. And I'm happy to provide more detailed information if anybody needs it. So the thank you for Marie's team, they put together these beautiful pie charts for us this year to outline, well, to really break down the composition of students in our district. So this is for Northborough. This does not include the pre-K students, but it is the rest. So this breaks down how many students there are in IEPs in Northborough, which is 366. And then you can see a breakout of categories here. Then I have the next slide is Southborough. And I can provide this information to anybody if they want it separately. Southborough is obviously just a little bit of a smaller district, so we have a smaller amount of IEPs, 187. But a similar breakdown, also does not include pre-K. And then regional, we're up to 207. This does include, I guess it doesn't include pre-K. This is regional, no, right, that's the point, okay. And this is another breakdown for you. So you can see the range of students that are being serviced. So this is our brag slide. This is everything that our group did last year. A lot of information that we had, several lectures and workshops, two social events. We work, we reach out to local newspapers and via the district to gather information out into the public. We have our own newsletter, we're on Facebook. We did participate in Be Well, Northborough, Southborough Kindness Week, and the first ever annual childhood fair this year. We are collaborating frequently with our school committee liaisons at our district meetings. We had nine total meetings between ourselves and the district this year, this past year rather. We advocate for greater disability awareness promotion across the district. We participated in the district's equitable audit. We're closely with district administration over the course of three months to really collaborate and redefine working with each other in an advisory role on special education program and curriculum. That was a great process, and I think we all really came out the better from that. Provided input on NSPAC priorities impacting the district's strategic plan. And we hosted a very successful In Person Go The Distance Awards ceremony at a field. So our first speaker series event last year, last fall, was Carrie Magro. He's a young man with autism. He's pretty famous. He actually advises for many TV shows and movies with the autism perspective. So he's a really great speaker. He's very polished, and it was really, really great to have him. We also had No Sibling Left Behind. This is a topic that isn't always covered, but the siblings of students or people with disabilities is a really big deal, especially as the siblings get older and they can sometimes, you know, have to take the parents places and help them care for their siblings. Executive Function Workshop presented by Sarah Ward. This was our hit of the year. We co-sponsored this with Concorde Carlisle, Hanga, Maynard, and the SHO BAC. And we had 1,000 people on this one. We had to turn people away. It was incredible. This was one that the district was fortunate enough to help fund for us. So since we split the cost between all of these different CPACs, it was a very digestible number. I really appreciate it. Couldn't have done it without you. And this is one of our number one topics when we serve the families. We don't have our survey results back yet from this fall, but usually one of the number one topics is executive function. I made a copy. It relates to everyone in the district, not just special education students. So I think that's why it's such a great topic. We also did a basic rights presentation on understanding the IEP. We always have new families who are new to the process, so this is a great way for them to know what they should know. We also worked to introduce some of the new key district staff members to our special education families. Megan Kelty did a literacy overview for us last fall. And then in early last year, we had a transition planning workshop, which I believe we do pretty much every year. We definitely want to plan to do that again next year. And then we had our first social emotional learning workshop with what we like to call J-Lo, Jennifer Lipton-McConner. And that was really fantastic as well. We had two social events last year. We had a fable playground meetup, and we had our parents' night out social. Go The Distance Awards, as I mentioned earlier, was a great success. It was really, really nice to be back in person. We had so much fun putting this together. We had 54 award recipients. So we had nominees from all 10 schools, which is great, and we had two community members. Here are some pictures from the event. We also had, I don't know if I say it, DECA, which is a group here in high school. They were doing a flat sale inside. And we had a, we had a performance by the Unified Seating Club. They love to perform. They brought us down. And we want to recognize some of the things that we've noticed during the year that the district has done that we are fully in support of. And I know there are many that I'm not mentioning here, but I do want to highlight the Return of the Titan Games. But it was my first time going in person, and it's just one of those heartwarming moments, days. I just, we really appreciate that the district works so hard to put this together to benefit so many people. Not to mention the best, the best buddies of the group of kids from high schools who support. I can see they have so much joy being there as well. And as I mentioned earlier, at the Finn School at the end of the year was the first annual early childhood fair. We had presents there. It was, it was a really great venue for us. We were surrounded by a lot of young education groups, many of whom I'd worked with for my own child, ABA services, music, everything. And it was a great way for us to reach out to the community. In the past, we have often been at local houses, but that doesn't turn into a great opportunity for parents to stop and talk to us. It's not the right venue. This was perfect. So we really appreciate being included. So looking ahead, we've started to put together some events for this fall. We just had our, we had our first quarterly meeting with the district. And we are planning a parent's night out. We want, our focus this year in alignment with the overall district theme is, you know, community building, making community connections. So a lot of what we'll be seeing this year is coffee and connect, parent outings. Like we, we're so happy to get past just doing webinars with families where you just don't get any connection to anybody, even though you can get information. And we want to really work on getting parents to know each other. So we have a playground meetup, and we are doing our first speaker series of the year, also some parent training later in October. So in addition to what we're planning to do, we are also working on communicating everything in the best way possible. So we're kind of going to continue our monthly meetings with Marie and her team and our school committee liaisons. We've got those meetings all set up. We're going to continue our community presence in a variety of different events in the community. Coffee and connect events. We are on social media. We update our website, local newspapers. And we are working through promotion through Parents Fair and our own newsletters. So as I mentioned earlier, we spent a fair bit of time earlier this year sort of working through with the district how NSPAC and the district worked together. And what we came up with was a real increased collaboration between our group and the district through streamlined communications. And we figured out a much more organized way to meet and work through everything that needs to be discussed. We're going to be collaborating with the administration to promote NSPAC to more district families. That's already happening. We continue to play an advisory role on special activities coming out of the equitable. We are looking forward to mentoring, collaborating, and advising the LPAC once that is in a place where we can meet with those parents, with that board. And we want to continue to build a strong partnership between our group and the district as our role continues to evolve to one of more collaborative future. So as we look ahead, this past year, we did not run a fundraiser, but we do want to look into doing a fundraiser this year. In the past, we've also had success with NEF and ASEF grants, so we'll be looking into those this year. And there are a few other grants we might, there's a cultural grant, a few others we've heard of that could be a good fit for us. We've also had district support, and we do, we are interested in school committee budget support conversation down the road. All of this funding is to, to help us support parent events, but also operational costs or a variety of weapon issues. And this room summarizes ways to connect with us wherever we are. Thank you. Sorry Nicole isn't here tonight, but if you have questions for myself or Johanna, here.
Thank you so much. That presentation is amazing to see all of the, all of everything that has been done. Before you even got to the goal, I was thinking about how you were building communities, which was really impressive. So to have a goal built around that and connect to the strategic fans is amazing. It looks like I've generated some other resources for parents.
Yeah.
It's great. So, open it up to comments or questions.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you very much for the presentation, and I would like to say that, you know, we attended the Go The Distance Awards, and I think there were several school committee members that were also there. And I think one thing that really impressed me beside the music was the student presentations when they gave, you know, speeches. And they were just phenomenal. They really were. It was, it was just, it was a wonderful evening, and I saw how much money I bought, you know, to be kind. And I'm anxious to see about that early childhood fair. It is the first year. I hope that that continues. And if there's some way that we can get communication out to the parents that are just moving into the district. I think it's helpful that they may not have school age kids that preschool and may be looking for resources. I think that's wonderful. And my only question was, when you were saying looking ahead, one of the bullets was to mentor, collaborate, and advise LPAC. Am I familiar, what is LPAC?
What is that?
So that's a char, multi-named world parent population. It's a parallel advisory that supports ROTA and ELD work. So it's our L, Parallel NSPAC Group. And we are working to establish that this year.
Okay, I saw the E-L, and I'm thinking, okay, English line, language learned despite that there being another L in it. So I'm familiar with what that was, but I think that would be one of them.
So it's an English learner or parent advisory committee?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing up the Go The Distance Awards. The, that's one thing I didn't highlight, and I definitely should have. The student spotlights was a new thing we did this year. We invited a couple of students to either speak and speak at the time of, or if they were more comfortable, submit a video earlier. And they're high school students at Algonquin's Top of the Wall. Actually, I'm sorry, we did have one student last year. This year, we have two. We wanted to get a little more broad. But it was for our high school students who had been receiving special education services to speak about their experience and what they're doing if they're graduating. It's inspiring. And what's so nice about Go The Distance is so many of those students, past educators are there, and they can see, this is my student now graduating. It's just, it's really nice to see.
If I could, through the chair, a great presentation, Melissa. It's really, it's incredible breadth and depth of what your organization accomplishes each year. It's very impressive. Great, could I ask you if you're going to rename the LPAC to ML PAC?
That is, Rhoda's in the audience. We'll have to take that up later, most likely. Once you, once you get used to LPAC, we'll change it to ML.
I guess I'll take Paul Buck's torch and ask, do you have everything you need? That's extremely productive. I've been a part of those meetings. You know, do you have as many parents contributing I know who took a big care of you?
Yes. Okay, yeah, thank you for asking that. We, you know, it's, it's been a little bit of a heavier load right now as we're trying to get our year running. We are really encouraged, though. We just launched our survey about a week and a half ago. And we're going through the data today, and a couple of parents have actually reached out to, maybe not a board member, but to actually actively participate, maybe take on a few things. So we're connecting with those parents right now, and we hope that that leads to some active involvement. Because I think it can be overwhelming for a parent who, especially if they're somewhat new to NSPAC, to, you know, oh, sure, I'll go on the board. Like that's a little unlikely.
A burden with figure sorting things out.
Right, but if we can give them a simple task to take on, or just, I found when I first joined, it was really great to just come to a couple of the meetings and just listen, and you learn a lot from parents who have been in the system a little bit longer, and that was sort of how I got involved.
Can we as liaisons offer anything?
I'll get back to you. Absolutely.
Along the same lines, like you mentioned, fundraising and support from the school creating a new budget. How much does it take to do all these things that you want to do?
So we don't have a huge budget. I mean, in the past, we've received help from, and we continue to receive help from the district for some specific items. And we work sort of a reimbursement route. But, I mean, I, I think the number we have right now is about $3,000, but we haven't really done like an audit of what we're like specifically wanting to do.
So you would want $3,000 from each school committee? Or?
No, no.
So 3,000 total, that would be comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, and as I said, don't quote me on that exact number because we haven't worked it out. But there are a couple of things that we, that we have the NSPAC partnership fee that we, that Marie's team pays for us every year. That's a $1,000. So our thought is, well, instead of all these one-offs and reimbursements, if we could just have our money, we can do the things we need to do. And, you know, we were generous with Go The Distance. We're lucky we don't have to pay some things like a location fee, but other things do add up. So that's, yeah, that's sort of where we are.
If I might, into the chair, just remember Kelly, the Northborough school, the budget is larger than the Southborough. As you portion this out.
So you want to do on a scale, sliding scale, is that what we're here, percentage level?
Sure.
I would like to suggest that I was with the guidance counselors here at Algonquin recently talking about volunteerism and the community hours. And then I think that some clubs have that as required. If you could tap in to at least do some of the schlepping when those events occur, like Go The Distance, and really not just for them to... and really not just for them to be there on the bookends beginning and end, but it's a greatness.
Yeah.
Really great to take that in.
That's a great idea. I know best buddies here in my school is amazing. You know, we had, we actually didn't have much success getting them to our event this year because their volunteerism at that time wasn't as strong as it has been in the past, like for in-person events. And I think they were sort of stretched thin. But we'll continue to reach out with them. One other thing I didn't mention that we are also really excited to work on. We don't know how this will pan out, but we would really like to expand best buddies to other schools in the district. We're beginning to talk with some principals to gauge interest. But, you know, that's, it's a parent, it's a parent's own piece. It's not something that you can just say you want to do it and then off it happens. It's akin to running the girls' camp in the school, you know. You really need dedicated families there. So I think those are a little bit, a little bit to it. That can be a little tricky, but the idea of having best buddies at a younger age is really exciting.
It would be, especially in high schools where mentoring.
Oh, great.
Yeah, who was, in developing those best buddy skills. And you've always got sort of that, that line.
Any other questions, compliments?
Well, again, thank you so much.
Thank you everyone, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
So next on the agenda, the school committees have three really important functions. One is policy setting, one is budget, and the last is evaluation of superintendent. So tonight, the superintendent is going to present his goals for the year.
So thank you. So a very important part of the work that I do is setting goals for myself in terms of helping the district move forward. So this evening, I'll spend some time talking about the superintendent's evaluation process, review the timeline, and then share with you my proposed goals for your consideration for your goal, for feedback. Before I begin, I will just share that as I enter my fourth year as superintendent, each year I remind myself that this is really challenging work, that assistant superintendents and directors and principals and educators also have challenging work. And there's always room for growth and improvement. And that is one area that I think is really exciting about being in education is that we could be doing this work for a hundred years. And I will find areas to fine tune home and develop our class. So that said, I'll review the kind of the process. So one nice component around the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Evaluation Process for educators, directors, principals and the superintendent is that it's the same five-step process. That process begins with self-assessment. Self-assessment begins four standards and indicators. And it's really a great opportunity to identify where in terms of those standards, we think it's important to do in the world. From that self-assessment process, we take time setting goals, thinking of the goals we want to accomplish and really developing a plan to accomplish those goals. The next phase is implementation. So throughout the year, how will those goals be accomplished? And what tasks will be important to move forward with to reach those goals? Formative assessment and evaluation. So an opportunity for the school committee to get a sense of how, how am I doing? Meeting the goals that I set. And there are opportunities for course correction and change of direction. And then lastly, summative evaluation. So at the end of the year, my role is to provide you with data and feedback around whether I met the goals I set for or made progress for and to provide evidence to the committee. And then eventually, that evidence then gets created into a summative assessment, which basically raises me on progress toward goals, but also on how I met each of the four standards. So in terms of timeline for this year, so obviously the first important step is for me to complete the self-assessment, which I have, and think about what goals I want to move forward with and get the school committee's approval. I did have a meeting with Jen Primack and John O'Shea to review my draft proposals. So they've had a chance to review those and provide me with feedback already. The next important milestone is December 7th, which is the formative assessment. So I will provide you with an update on progress toward my goals. I will note that from September 21st to December 7th, that is a very short window. It's condensed, but I will provide an update at that time. March 8th is when I begin to prepare for the end-of-cycle report, providing evidence around goals and focus indicators. And then with the expertise of Cheryl Luckery, we'll send out a Google form for each committee member to provide in-home feedback around how they think I'm meeting the goals. May 25th is the due date for your work and feedback. And then May 27th through June 2nd, that is when the prime chair, superintendent's free chair and regional chair get together and actually draft my summative evaluation. And then that gets presented in open session at the June 15th in my school. So this is kind of outlines the timeline of events and events. And before I start speaking about my goals, I have to answer any questions about the process. And last year, Joan and Paul had the pleasure of drafting the report. So they're, I highly recommend reaching out. They had a streamlined process that I think was very meaningful. I think there were some lessons learned.
There is. I'd just like to make one comment that I think that, you know, each of us sometime will get to be chair and to work with Greg and Duke and coming over the bulls and the evaluation tool. But I'd like to let everybody know that Cheryl Luckery has done a fantastic job making it a lot easier to do. And she's always available to go over the answer and to give us tutorials and then how to get the, all of your individual evaluations in together. So it's an easier process I think it used to be daunting before. And I think Paul, working with Paul all the time and working with other chairs has always been enjoyable when you've worked with the region, works with the union. It's always a wonderful process, but hats off to Cheryl Luckery for the way she's streamlined it. She makes it a lot easier, a lot easier.
And I would share that there's a lot of work upfront for the superintendent to do the work. And then the real work of getting feedback starts again in March, April and May. So we'll have more updates around what that looks like specifically. And I know other committee members have been available to answer specific questions that may be members who have not gone through this process would like to ask. So with that said, I would like to share what my proposed goals are for the 22, 23 academic year. Like prior years, my goals center around leading the district and making progress toward its vision 2026, the plan educates, fire and challenge. And my goal is aligned with the plan's five strategic objectives. Empowering learners, equity of opportunity, healthy and balanced learners, educator learning, leadership, and lastly, finance and operations to support teaching and learning. And I have the unique pleasure of really working with a team of people to move these goals forward. So Dr. Reinor, Dr. Stoloy, Mary Allen, Doug in, Jennifer Connor. My goals really are a reflection of the work that's happening throughout the district. And really, my task is to make sure I'm putting people where their strengths are so we can move forward in terms of making progress toward the strategic objective.
Excuse me, can you project on this screen?
Sure.
Or pause this screen?
We probably took my Apple TV off.
Yeah, yeah. Why is that? That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. So furthermore, in terms of, you know, in addition to my goals, I will focus on four standards as a part of the superintendent and district administrator program. The four standards are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And within those four standards, there are nine indicators that I have selected this year. Each year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education highlights focus standards. I have selected the department's focus standard as the standards that I'll move forward with indicators. As a deterrent to educators' evaluation process and principals' evaluation process, also parallels this method and this format. And one of the areas of work that we really tried hard to align is making sure that educator goals, school improvement goals, plans, the district's strategic plan, director, principals' goals and my goals are aligned so that we're moving in the same direction and making progress toward the five strategic objectives. So the first goal really centers around empowering learners and really centers around collaborating within and across schools to ensure consistent implementation of high-quality instructional practices and resources. Continue collaborating within schools to implement high-quality instructional practices. Statically promote innovation in teaching and learning and provide opportunities for students and educators to use technology to problem solve, learn and communicate. And I'll highlight a few action steps. So the first is to further develop systems for professional collaboration to support high-quality evidence-based instructional practices. Really looking at how we collaborate as teams across our 10 schools and as a leadership team to move forward with our goals set forth in our strategic plan. Also providing opportunities for peer-to-peer observation practices such as instructional rounds. And we've embedded that this year in our educator evaluation process for educators. The other action step is to make innovative practices visible to key stakeholders, clearly shine a light on those innovative practices that are happening in our school pockets and really communicating those out to others, whether educators, their schools and the larger community. And then lastly, much of this work has been started, which is launching a rebranded website and we're in the process of fine tuning that website. Launching a district communication tool, so having a unified communication tool and a communication plan. And then seeking feedback from key stakeholders on whether we're improving communication and meeting the target we're moving forward in that area. The second strategic objective is equity of opportunity. And that is really providing all students access to challenging and culturally responsive learning experiences for individual needs. So one of the work areas we're really focusing on is developing and implementing coherent systems for collecting and using student learning data to better inform the work that needs to move forward for our students and groups of students. Also looking to foster culturally responsive and inclusive communities and requirements that provide equal access. Develop and implement consistent systems to identify and address student individual needs for a full range of learners. Ensure excellence in the continuum of educational program for students for services. And lastly, to ensure quality, coherence and equitable access for course and programs. And just a few action steps that I'll highlight to move this work forward is to develop and implement data systems for how data is collected systemically across our 10 schools to conform instruction and to provide schools and teachers with data dashboards to make informed decisions. Implement elevation, which is a student management system for multilingual learners, informer multilingual learners or English learners. To develop, implement year two of a world of difference in secondary schools and to develop peer mentors to help implement the civic standards identified in history and social science framework. So last year was our first year implementing a world of difference and it was a success. And this year is really moving that work forward. Year two is them getting up here, leaders involved, clear master's degrees. And then lastly, assessing the current implementation of evidence-based inclusionary practices and identifying areas of improvement and ensuring that these practices are being implemented across our schools. In terms of strategic objectives, four, three, helping balance learners, which is really prioritizing the social, emotional and physical well-being of students. So we continue to work on developing a coherent and systematic approach to social, emotional learning, pre-K through 12. And we're also looking at developing a comprehensive approach to health education of pre-K through 12. So last year, we worked on developing a baseline of our SEO student needs. And that work will continue and be using that data to really inform what the next steps are in terms of creating programs and experiences for students, social, emotional learning. This year, we're focusing on the Health and Wellness Committee to review the Health and Wellness Committee's functions and roles and making sure it has a clear path on its work. Health and Wellness Committee is led by Mary Ellen Duggan. It's been a couple of years that we've been able to meet in person and really fine tune and hone its mission and purpose. Some of the work will center around policy development and also work looking at the metro list, health and analysis survey data determining on what we need as a district to move forward. And lastly, another action step I'd like to highlight is although we have changed the start time at Algonquin Regional High School to eight o'clock, we've moved the hands on the clock, but looking at students' social, emotional well-being is far more than just having a clear start time. Looking at student stress levels in terms of sleep hygiene, looking at homework levels, looking at overcommitting and really providing students with the tools and skills to find balance in their lives, when it's sometimes very hard to find that balance. So this work that we're moving forward. The next strategic objective is educator learning, learning and leadership. So demonstrating continual growth through professional collaboration. So really increasing district leaders, school leaders and teachers' capacity to improve teaching and learning. We believe that every member of our organization is a leader, from students to staff, to educators, to principals, to central office. And really, last year, we aligned, we've launched our alignment of school improvement plans. And this year, it's really looking at providing those, setting new action plans for the 22, 23-year school year and really identifying work, progress that was made in the first year of implementation. Another, another implementation action step is providing opportunities for district and school leaders to further develop their skills, whether it's observation, feedback, coaching of educators. So really working on, you know, the goal of educator evaluation is to improve an educator's ability to work with students and making sure that feedback that we're giving educators really is helping us move in that direction. And lastly, as I mentioned earlier, really assessing implementation of year one of our school improvement plans and taking where there needs to be some adjustments in their lives. And lastly, strategic objective number five is finance and operations to support teaching and learning. So really developing, supporting and operating sustainable, effective, well-maintained, safe schools. So this year, we are working very collaboratively with our safety officials in this municipal police and fire. And we are sitting back down at the table discussing best practice and how we can continue that partnership moving forward so that we are prepared for potential events we're ready. Engaging the school community in open dialogue about the qualities of school facilities that will support the next generation of Northbrook-Southrose students. Identify ways, systematic ways to increase energy efficiency, increase cost, increase reliability and security improvement for our facilities. Adopt a new information system, PowerSchools, so that was achieved. We are still fine tuning and learning how to use that data efficiently in terms of reporting, out to parents, reporting out to the community. And lastly, we continue to work on our transportation system by looking at how we can improve And lastly, we continue to work on our transportation system by looking at how we can improve the efficiency of how we use our buses and also customer service. Some large areas, our action steps center around safety and security infrastructure, really looking at adding to the infrastructure and security protocols that we have in place, looking closely at enhancing security access. We have our security camera system and just overall partnership with the district is an action step. Looking at training, systematic training for safety protocols and procedures for district staff. So with every traumatic event that happens in a school district, there's always learning and lessons to learn. So we are working closely with our, again, safety officials to hear what those lessons are and what practices and changes we need to make and result. Another action step is to continue to partner with a town on long-term capital and master planning. In the community of South Row, we have the Neri Building Committee working with MSBA. In the community of North Row, we're working on submitting a statement of interest for Peaslee School, as well as states of interest for sub- and sub-regular repair projects at Proctor. And then at the high school, we are looking at improving our overall athletic complex, and that is a major project that we're moving forward. In terms of the four standards and the indicators that I've selected, I won't spend too much time on these, but for standard one, which is instructional leadership, I've selected curriculum and really focusing on monitoring and assessing progress across all departments and content areas to ensure that we're systematically implementing effective pedagogy curriculum. The next indicator that I selected is instruction, really looking at how instruction is taking place in our classrooms, making sure that we have evidence-based instructional practices happening, making sure with high expectations, and folks are getting effective feedback. Standard two is management and operations, so I selected a 2A, which is environment, making sure we have plans that effectively use procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a range of safety, health, and emotional and social needs of students. Also, in standard two, management and operations, we selected 2B, which is human resources and management development. And that really speaks to looking at how we can do a better job retaining our current faculty staff and recruiting a more diverse workforce that really mirrors the students that we had attended in public schools of North and Southwest. So looking at hiring a diverse workforce, looking at job embedded professional development, looking at ways we can provide opportunities for ESPs to grow and develop into educators in our system, our areas that perhaps need to belong with the E.T.R. department. For standard three, it's family and community engagement, so which is 3A engagement, sort of looking at monitoring and supporting comprehensive cultural response and collaborative engagement practices that welcome and encourage every family to actively participate in our schools, our classrooms, and across the district. Also, standard three, I selected communication, so really looking at how we engage in regular two-way communication that's culturally proficient and in a way where families can actually comprehend and understand and actually participate in the work we do from the classroom school to the district level. Also, 3B, for the standard sharing responsibility, so monitoring adherence to district-wide policies and practices that promote continuous collaboration with families, support student learning, development both at home and school. And then lastly, the last standard is professional culture, so promoting success for students by nurturing sustained school culture, reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning with your staff. So I selected communications, so focusing my work on communications, to families, to larger stakeholders, to the school community and school community. And then lastly, continuous learning, making sure that I'm staying current in my practice and engaged in staying current research and best practices, and also making sure that the team that I work closely with, the boss, goes engaged in that work. So that is a summary of the goals that I've set this year and standards and the indicators that I'm proposing to move forward with the 22 and 23 school. If you have any questions or hearing feedback, suggestions.
I think that was thorough.
Thank you, Greg. That was very thorough, so really not so many questions. I appreciated hearing you talking about our students' stress levels and sleep hygiene, you know, technology balance in life. As part of, you know, your goal and initiatives is involving parents in this conversation, part of the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of thoughts come to mind. First, I think that students need to be actively engaged in the conversation. I think families, we need to hear from families' perspectives. We need to give families opportunities to learn about strategies and ways that they can support their learners at home. So I think it is part of the work that we do. You know, Jennifer Lawrence and Mel Conner is planning on some family and community engagement sessions around these topics, and I think seeking learn from feedback is essential. And then finding some tangible ways that we can support our students in managing their overall stress level, or finding ways to have a balance in terms of their school, home, personal level.
To what degree is that also possible to do for staff? Because it's such an ecosystem.
It is. I mean, I think it's interconnected, absolutely. I think that it's essential. I think a lot of, we're also working on making sure our staff feel balanced, that they have a balance in their professional lives and their personal lives. But having conversations around what it's like to be a learner in our system and ways we can mitigate those stresses is essential, because the educators are the folks who are implementing our practices and our policies, which can oftentimes unintentionally create additional stress on our students. So working closely with them to make sure that they're part of the conversation and part of how we help address those students.
I think it's essential, and I think if you are a teacher who's learned to appreciate the biology of stress and what that, the toll that it takes, the very long period, that you should also work with the curriculum in a way that doesn't feel stressful. So that would be my hope, and I appreciate the focus that you've made of this.
I'd like to say that I was impressed with standard four, professional culture. I think that what you had in there about being informative, reaching out to the community, and also to develop and nurture culture, which staff members are reflective by their practice, and you're supporting opportunities for the administration teams to collaborate together on effectiveness. And I think it's, as people say, it's always from the top down. So I think with you at the helm, with the assistant superintendent, and then the district office, and modeling a professional culture that we accept everybody and we listen, I think that's the best thing that, you know, I've seen in you as a leader of our districts, is that if you do that, then in the district office, that's going to filter down to the principals, it's going to filter down from the principals to the teachers, and then teachers to the students. Everybody is going to mirror and act the way that they're treated. And I think that this is something that, you know, I'm glad to see that it's there. I think we do it, but I think that, you know, there's always times and situations when we can do a little bit better. But I'm really glad to see what you put in there for standard four, professional culture.
I was along the same lines of being glad to see something in there under the finance and operations, when you mentioned the MSBA process possibly for Peaslee. And I was glad to hear you mention Neri in there also, from the standpoint of, I know, having done the little subcommittee for a while previously, some of these, there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be laid for this process, and it's, I know it's a lot of time and effort and organization behind the scenes, and it can take several different directions, but there is a lot of work done for that, and I'm glad that it's recognized and can be acknowledged later this year.
Question. And perhaps not for this year, but maybe something to think about to get your reaction to, the timeline, the way we evaluate. I'm just wondering if there isn't an opportunity to do some type of survey, both of the teachers or staff and parents, about how do they feel, I guess, you're progressing against these goals that the committee can then consider. So maybe perhaps two for this year, but maybe think about for future years.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we do, I do a 360 survey. Has not, has not included parent and the community, something we can look at, but it does include the folks of the NASA leadership team, getting their feedback and input around how I can become a better leader and support that.
Is each school good?
Yes, each administrator, each NASA member also seeks feedback from their school.
I see no other questions we need to vote on. Please put the vote. Motion to set these proposed goals.
I'll make the motion and go to region.
I'll make the motion for North Row, second. I'll make the motion for Union, second. Motion for South Row, second.
And then Roger, we each vote differently. We all have.
South Row first, right? So moved and seconded, is any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
North Row, it's moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Of both? Stay?
Wanted second.
And the motion moved and seconded, any discussion?
I guess I would just make a comment that certainly if anybody has any concerns, they should feel free to reach out to school committee members at any time throughout the year, because that's certainly something we can, we can address. So it doesn't necessarily have to wait till the very end of the year to receive feedback. We can certainly receive feedback at any time.
All in favor? opposed?
Pass this.
So it's moved and seconded, all in favor? Or any discussion, right? All in favor? I'm saying it's unanimous.
All right, next one, this is personnel. Jer, I'm coming, I'm sorry.
Wow, dude.
Yeah, so in addition to evaluating the superintendent, the school committee also sets the academic calendar. So that is governed by a school calendar policy, I-100. So this evening is to start that conversation and that process. The policy, I think it's really important to note, that the policy does state that the calendar will be approved no later than May of regular school. There are some time, I think, in past practice, and voted usually typically in December or January, so that families have access to the calendar, so they can make plans for vacations, summer camps, etc. So this evening, my intention is to share three draft calendars for discussion and review, and then also make sure that I have an understanding of what type of data and information the school committee needs to make an informed decision around the calendar for the 23, 24 academic year. So in your packet, I provided three calendars, and draft A is the first calendar I'll review. So draft A calendar is a very traditional calendar to what the calendar has looked like over the past few years. It has Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Good Friday. Rosh Hashanah is typically a holiday that if it falls on a school day, the district has observed that holiday. But this year, it is on a weekend. But Yom Kippur is on Monday of next year, and that would be a day off, and then Good Friday. And then PD days in this calendar, calendar A, are scheduled on election days. So we have, I believe, the 24th and the 14th scheduled as PD days, so a school would not be in session for students, but our educators would be involved in professional development. So very traditional calendar to what it's looked like over the past several years. And the last day, barring no snow days, would be June 12th. So the second calendar, draft B, has school on Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, so this is a shift. Since Rosh Hashanah is on a weekend, I believe it's not impacting this calendar, but this would be a shift, we would have school on Yom Kippur, which is the 25th, so that is a change. And then also, Good Friday, which is on the 29th, that would be the day school is in session. And then we have PD on 9/25 and 3/29, so those religious holidays, educators would be in session. The last.
Election days.
Elections. No, I'm sorry, election days are not in school. So no, Yom Kippur would not be observed, and Good Friday and PD day would be election days. That's calendar. And lastly, this is what I just explained, calendar C. So calendar C, we would have PD on 9/25, which is Yom Kippur, and PD on Good Friday. And we would ask the communities to not have their election sites in our schools. That is calendar C. So those are the three draft calendars to serve as a catalyst to begin the conversation and discussion. And what would be helpful for me today is, again, what information and data collection would you like me to engage in, so that on the next time the combined committee meets, I can provide the committee with that data, so it can make an informed decision.
One thing that I'd like to know is, and I don't even know, I've mentioned it before, I don't even know if it's able to, because we don't collect the data, so maybe it would have to be an independent survey, would be how many families are impacted by religious holidays in general throughout the year, and which families are, even if they're not, maybe even. maybe even personally if they're impacted by it, but we don't have a date for them. I remember last year we had some young students, you know, asking about, I think, any Diwali or something like that. So I'd like to hear from the community members from that sense of who's impacted by having it and who's not. I know I'm a practicing Catholic, but, you know, Good Friday for me is not one that I would personally accept by, but I know other Catholics who might accept by it. So I'd be curious to see how the community feels about having dates and not dates. The other thing, you know, is I'd like to look at neighboring towns and how they do things. I took it from my phone today to pull up the local calendars for this year for them. And it just shows you, one, I was like, oh, I like the way this looks. It's a little easier to follow the calendar and tell you exactly what versus the triangle and the circle from these squares. But I've heard lots of compliments about having all the additions this year, so that was great. But, so one, for design's sake, I thought would be nice to compare to other schools, but also to see what it is. And just briefly about like the elections, I know it's a big impact on us, so I look to see which people have it. There's only, I think, one that has it, and they have a PD day on an election day. And it's just the national election day that they have it on. And then the other ones don't have anything, but they have it in their schools, you know. But again, our community members feel that they don't want to have school in session if the election's in the schools, so. But I was looking at the other places that they do have the elections and decide that. So that would be information to give also to get it out of schools, other possible scenarios.
I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit to how, you know, some of the arguments or discussions that come up in terms of, you know, I think the issues that you raised about taking, potentially taking some religious holidays away, but also the comments and concerns that you've had from patient, uh, parents from, sorry, I'm still at work, right? From parents whose religious holidays are not observed, and then also integrating that into how you might think about managing that through the policy that we have in terms of how parents, how families can celebrate those holidays.
Yes, I think that's a great point. We do have a religious observance policy which provides families, parents, and guardians a mechanism to observe whatever observance it is that's happening. I would say over the past three, five years, we have received a number of letters advocating for adding additional holidays or observances, whether it's Diwali. You know, so I have a stack of letters that I will make part of kind of an informational packet to the committee. But I think that some of the, some of the thoughts that I've heard is that you observe Good Friday, why don't we also observe Diwali? I've also heard comment that, you know, in this, in this time of anti-Semitic environment around our country, that it's not the time to remove Jewish holidays from the calendar. So I think there's a lot of voices that need to be heard and a lot of thoughts. But I, I do think it's important to share that we do have a religious observance policy that, although it's not on the calendar, that provides a method and a mechanism for families to observe the holiday that is important to them or observe their practice without having a child be penalized academically for taking the time to do that.
Wait, Roger was next, I'm sorry.
So, thank you. So I think we mentioned this in a previous meeting, we've got three committees, but there's only two towns involved in elections. Currently, are elections in both, what, in schools? Is that not true?
Both of them are raised in middle schools.
Okay, so has there been any, so if we move forward this thought of not having elections in the schools, has there been any reaching out at all to, through town leadership about this or not yet?
Not yet. I think there's been some very preliminary conversations.
Yes.
I think it's nice to see on all three calendars how much earlier the last day of school is. I'm not sure how that came to be, but I know a lot of frustration with a lot of families is that, you know, the way that Juneteenth falls and how it plays into our calendar is not always ideal with it. I think this year is another example of it's on a Monday. Depending on snow days, we may be back for like one day after a long weekend. So I think strategically planning our calendar, that our last day falls far enough in advance that maybe Juneteenth doesn't come into play, even with a few snow days. My one concern about, I do kind of like Draft B, I think, but my one concern is with some of the other calendars, having professional development days on holidays, how would that be handled with staff who may observe those holidays?
So in the bargaining agreement, there's language that allows them to observe their preferred religion of the day. It is, it is something that would be an obstacle for some of our faculty and staff.
Right.
And it's a trade-off. So it's not ideal.
Okay. And then I guess the other thing, and I know there's a lot of talk about this, and we've had some public comments about, you know, really pushing to get the elections out of the schools. And I think part of it is, you know, we have 10 schools, but we only use two for elections. So having the entire district be off, and I like the idea of having professional development days on those election days, but I think it would also be better if the elections were out of the school, we could strategically place our professional development days on better, better days or better times for, you know, you guys to have your professional development and not towards the end of the year. And, you know, I think for a lot of working families, a random Tuesday in the middle of the week is a hard day to have off. So I, I would love to see a push to really get the elections out of the schools.
So I will, I will share that placing the PD days on the election days is not ideal in terms of the design principle.
Yeah.
It's not as if we said, you know, when can we maximize these two PD days? And wasn't they serendipitously ended up on those two election days?
Yeah.
So we would place them differently?
We didn't have to.
Doubts not.
Yeah.
This has always been an issue, even before we had it on our computers, we just always had color coded, in the orange and the green and the yellows, we'd see the difference. And it is an important issue, knowing that it affects everybody in our district of parents. What I would like to see, and what I would like to suggest, is somehow, if it's condensed, if you have each of these, but do it in a survey that goes out to the parents and also out to the teachers. Just at our first September meeting in Northborough, K to A, we had two parents that voiced their concerns already and through the public comment section. So I think that, you know, a lot of times we wouldn't have a lot of audience, but we've had a lot of audience members that spoke about the religious holidays in the past. And I would like to know what the parents want to see. This is what they own, this is what they own with their kids, and I know a lot of people may take the time to answer and some don't. If it's a link through your, you know, Friday memo to the parents, something like that or something, you may want to streamline, this might be too much information, give A, B, and C, what religious holidays, no religious holidays. But also, I think that is, which is important, would be doing an attachment of the two policies that we have, the religious observance, and there is another one that we mentioned.
I think we do a list of all the holidays.
Yeah, okay. And then if there's one, you know, what happens during the observance, if there's any policies to go with it, make it as the link, not say, go to the website and figure it out. Just have it there so that people can see it and review it. Thank you.
Go right down the road.
Thanks, Sean. So I'm going to sort of tag off Joan. I do agree that that information from parents, I think, would be valuable for us as we make a decision, with the caveat of families understanding they're not voting for a calendar, they're choosing one that maybe would fit their family's needs so that we can make an informed decision. I would say I would really like to see a Draft D. I would really like to see Draft D be added as something to think about with no religious holidays and elections out of the school. Information I think that's important for us to have is how many people in our community actually know about the religious observance policy? How widely is it, I guess, utilized by students as well as by staff? I mean, staff might not know. I feel like as, I'm up on the policies, stuff to me for Northborough, I don't even know all of the policies in, you know, for our districts. So I'm sure parents who are juggling a million things may not know about it or know exactly what it entails. And I guess my only question or information to get is what would the process of getting the elections out of the schools be? Is there a timeline associated with that? Is there any red tape we need to go through?
Yeah, I think that is a conversation that we need to start sooner than later. So I think that is a conversation I'll begin to have with both towns, both communities around, you know, is it feasible, what would impact the, and is there an alternative for the election?
I really concur with the opportunity to separate church and state, possibly. And if we did observe holidays, they should reflect the makeup of the school. I've not heard about any Muslim holidays to date that may be of concern. And the other piece is, I'll be continuing to call Columbus Day, we naming it that, or converting to Indigenous Peoples' Day, as many of the schools around us have.
We, it's Columbus Day on this calendar, and that would be a consideration for the committee.
That would be changed if there's a vote we have?
I did.
Circle Pepper. I don't know if you all remember, but that's Aaron's comments that she shared, I just wanted to echo that I agreed with, all of what she added. And so that's kind of what I was waiting to say. In terms of the survey out to parents, we did that previously, so maybe before sending a new survey out, maybe just amongst the committees, you could reshare, here's the information we previously gathered for review, and then we can go back to, do we still want to send out another one? The reason, I guess, why there is a case for sending another is that the population has changed over the last year. There are new residents, new makeup, but we have collected some of that information previously. So I just think maybe resharing that.
I just wanted to say that I think that, so the last time, I think that no religious holidays issue was really seriously considered by all the committees, was maybe five?
Seven.
Yeah, okay. So, and I remember at the time, there were a lot of really passionate people who came to the meetings and shared their thoughts on how important it was for them to retain the Jewish holidays on the calendar. So I think that in gathering all of the information, I think it's going to be really important to articulate clearly why we're looking at this now. One of the things I remember being shared is that the Christian holiday of Christmas is sort of codified in the law, so it has to be a day off. And so, you know, to have these alternative holidays, you know, there really is no true separation of church and state in a way, when you look at it that way. But, so I just think all of that, if we have the most information we can have at the time that it's really brought forward for public comment and discussion, that would be helpful. And I think the letters referred to or whatever other information we have might be helpful. I don't know that will change many people's minds given, but we'll see.
So I just wanted to mention a quick point about, you know, we had this equity survey last year, and I think our district is trying to move in the direction of thinking about DEI types of, you know, issue how we can be better as a district, support families and students in that way. And I think that, you know, the surveys are great, too. I think I'd love to see surveys in the context of like, we're not just removing this, but, you know, it would be an opportunity. But I worry, too, like you send out a survey and the majority of families are Christian or Jewish, you're going to get results back that are skewed to that, which doesn't necessarily take into consideration. And so I think, you know, can we use the DEI task force as part of the decision-making around this? So again, I think it's an opportunity here where we have feedback from this equity audit, where we know that there are some areas that we can work on, and this could be potentially a way to, to make itself.
I think that's a great idea, Jen. I share Victoria's recollection, I believe we had a subcommittee look at this whole thing back then, when we were all set to get rid of the holidays, religious holidays, until these, as she said, very passionate Jewish community came out and changed our minds on the topic. And I don't expect it to be much different this time around, if I'm wrong. But I did have another question, where would PD days be? If you could just pick the best day for PD day?
I think it's a great question. We'll bring that back to the PD committee and have a conversation with the PD committee about the best.
I noticed one was in late, in, it was Draft C, it was September 25th. Late September, it doesn't seem to be one of them to be, when you just had a couple of schools starting.
Yeah, October, you know, tends to be a good, a good month, you know, as teachers have created their routines and their rhythm. And then, you know, February, March, again.
March, long.
But surprisingly, we, you know, we've not really had the conversation with the professional development committee. It's been, this is where PD day fits. We'll work around that and about the best PD day we can during that.
Just, just to kind of combine a lot of the comments that have been made and to echo the support of putting this out to a committee that is in touch with the inclusivity objectives of the districts, all three of them, as it pertains to what has been and what still remains a Judeo-Christian centered kind of cultural norms in all of these communities, and creating a more kind of inclusive space with policies that you have now, I think we are at kind of an inflection point with things that we elevate in addition to some of the things that are already kind of culturally normative, right? Like, and I think that it's important that we keep the framework of the messaging for generate, for the, for the next 10 to 15 years, more so than just the next year, right? Like as demographics are changing and individuals of different, of different belief backgrounds or different kind of, any type of different kind of background are coming in and joining our communities, that we're messaging, even in, even in the most subtle ways as a school calendar, that though, yes, we do have some kind of Judeo-Christian cultural normities around Christmas break, what we're calling it, winter vacation, that the idea is to move in the direction of the inclusive environment and ecosystem that we say we want. And that by elevating certain religious observances over others is in direct conflict to that, at least from my point of view. And so I would say that that has been said in different ways by other members, but that is an important frame and lens through which we see the decision moving forward. I am all for surveys, but I also want to keep in mind the anecdotal evidence that has come to us in just one meeting already of the school year, in addition to individuals in our public square who have said other items around, why does this school calendar have eight days off in the first six weeks? And so I think that surveys don't often reach the people who are less passionate. And so as we gather results from whatever feedback, we just keep in mind that that is reflective of the folks who are taking the time to take the surveys, in conjunction with the other feedback that we're receiving, whether through public comment or or as individuals in our communities. Thank you for your time.
I have just one thing, a piece of data that may or may not illuminate anything is like through power screen, just how attendance on, whether it be Diwali or Yom Kippur or whatsoever, differs from our daily average attendance. Does it or doesn't matter? So I think we've got enough suggestions to sustain you to our next discussion.
I mean, I think this is a very important topic. It's, you know, it's far greater than just the calendar. There's a lot underneath. And I think that we need to, I think there are a lot of ways to pass feedback and information. Surveys is one way, forums, anecdotal. I think we need to make sure we're canvassing a lot of different groups of people and different methods.
Absolutely. And I'm going to set up time, so I'll take one more on this and then move to our next.
Just a point of reference, when would be the optimal time that you'd like us to take a vote on this? For the operation of the schools for the next four years?
I think it's, you know, ideally, I think that the calendar is approved in the January, February timeframe. That is typically when the parents are thinking about summer camps, vacation schedules. However, it might not be feasible depending on, on the data that we collect and the decisions that the committee needs to make moving forward.
Thank you.
I just have one, I just have a suggestion where if, I was thinking that, I think the most important date for, that I always hear about is the first day of school. And that's really not up for huge debate probably, so we could always maybe establish that. It's in a more timely way, if this turns out to be a make your conversation.
In the week vacations, that's what they want to have. Some of the ones are already set. Thank you. Personnel?
So in your package is the personnel report as of September 21st, 2022. As you all know, we had a significant reshuffling of staffing in our finance department. We welcomed Corinne Barsley as the Southborough Financial Coordinator. Elena Datto, who was the Southborough Financial Coordinator, moved to, or was the Northborough Financial Coordinator, moved to the Regional Financial Coordinator. And then Pamela Roberts, who was the receptionist, moved to the Northborough Financial Coordinator position. And much of this resulted, as a result of Pamela Haig, who retired as Southborough's Financial Coordinator. So needless to say, the finance department has had a lot of moving parts. It has been impacted, but it's done an outstanding job welcoming new members and making sure that all of, all aspects of the finance department's tasks were completed in a timely and efficient manner.
Next, would you, any questions? Action on minutes? So we need to approve the three sets of minutes, the combined open meeting minutes of June 15th. Can we do these all as one or should we take them one by one?
Does executive session have to be retained?
Executive session can be retained, retained, yes.
It should be retained.
So we need a motion to accept the action about combined open meeting of June 15th, 2022.
I'll make a motion in combine A and C. I move that we accept the combined open meeting minutes of June 15th, 2022, and the combined special open meeting minutes of August 25th, 2022. I'll make that motion for Northborough, the region and the union. March of time, yes.
Second, second, second.
All right. Second for the region.
Second for the region, Karen.
Did the union second?
I'll second for the union.
Northborough.
Second for Northborough. And so move for Southborough?
Second. Second. So I have a region this time, all in favor for the region? Unanimous?
Northborough. Unanimous?
Southborough. Unanimous?
The union.
Oh, yes.
Those asked, and then do we need, do we need any motion for the executive session to retain it?
I move that to accept and retain the combined executive session meeting minutes of June 15th, 2022 for Northborough, the region and the union.
Second for the union?
Anytime.
There, the second. Roger, Northborough.
Need a second?
Yes, there we go. And you, we have a second for the union.
Second for the union.
Okay. Can we just do all at once?
Sure.
Okay, everyone in favor? We don't have to do it like zoom, okay. Anyone opposed, abstained?
Now, is that for the three that you mentioned? Because did we have a motion for Southborough yet?
No.
Any motion for Southborough?
Southborough, second.
All in favor for Southborough? Unanimous?
Sorry, I'll work this out. That brings us to our second public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to share something with the committee?
Seeing none. The regional standing session will break and the other two.
Northborough will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Adjourn at 7:04. Are you going to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Southborough will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Rebecca Tura.
Second.
Here's my Jen, all in favor. Unanimous at 7:04.